Call to order, the meeting of the city council, city of Waverly for June fifteenth, two thousand and twenty. The governor of Iowa has declared a public emergency because of the COVID nineteen outbreak. The mayor has determined that an in-person meeting of the city council is impossible or impractical without violating the governor's mandates. When an in-person meeting is impossible or impractical, Iowa code section twenty-one point eight permits a governmental body to conduct a meeting by electronic means. The meeting will be conducted by video conference using Zoom from the council chambers. The mayor and necessary city staff will be in the council chambers. The seven council members will not be in the chambers, but will participate via Zoom conferencing. I'm joined by city attorney, Bill Wurger and city clerk Carla Guyer this evening in the chambers. Comments for the items that are not on the agenda? Or for the public hearing may be made by submitting them prior to the meeting to the city clerk, mayor, or any of the council members over at calling three one nine five nine six zero one seven nine during the meeting. The video audio conference of the meeting will be broadcast on the normal public access channels. We will strive to maintain the quality of the video and audio during that broadcast. Public access is available through this broadcast. Meeting minutes will be still kept and will include a statement explaining why an in-person meeting was impossible or impractical. Roll call Carla.
Oh, four.
Here.
Bergen.
Here I am.
Drinkow.
I'm here.
Glazer.
Here.
Kangas.
Here.
Rothie.
Here.
Schneider.
Here.
Thank you, Carla. Seek approval of tonight's agenda, please.
I will move approval of the agenda as presented.
Second.
Motion by Bergen, second by Rothie. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same sign. All right, and take a half a step back here and go back and forgot to, need to add that on our roll calls, our guest council person. Sasha Burrell, how are you this evening?
Here, I'm well, how are you?
I'm doing great. Same rules as last time, great to see you again though, so. Approval of the minutes from the June first, two thousand and twenty regular meeting.
I'll move. Go ahead, Ian.
I'll move approval of the minutes as submitted.
Second.
Motion by Rothie, second by Drinkow, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same sign. Motion carries. Item E.
We need to turn that down in some way, we're gonna be able to hear.
Oh, we turn it down for the Zoom meeting? Can make your ass in here?
I don't know who that is. Well, must be, there you go. All right, item E, public hearing. During this public hearing, individuals may make comments by submitting them prior to the meeting to the city clerk, mayor, or any of the council members or by calling through at nine five nine six zero one seven nine during the meeting. This is the date, time, and place for a public hearing for the third reading of ordinance ten seventy-four and ordinance providing for rezoning of a parcel owned by the Bremer County Fair Association located to the east of thirty-ninth street northeast. Carla, any written or oral comments received?
I have none, your honor.
Thank you, any public comments? I do have the phone up here in the dais. Seeing anything coming up there? Close the public hearing and seek a motion to move forward.
I move approval of the third and final reading of ordinance ten seventy-four and ordinance providing for rezoning of partial ID one zero zero six four zero 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 two owned by the Bremer County Fair Association located to the east of thirty-ninth street northeast from A one agricultural district to M one light industrial district.
I'll second.
Motion by Drinkow, second by Glazer. Council discussion, if any. Hearing none, seeing none, roll call Carla.
Schneider.
Yes.
Rothie.
Yes.
Kangas.
Yes.
Glazer.
Yes.
Drinkow.
Yes.
Bergen.
Yes.
Oh, four.
Yes.
On a vote of seven, zero with zero absent, or ordinance ten seventy-four is approved on the third reading. Item F is the consent calendar. The following items will be acted upon by voice vote on a single motion without separate discussion unless someone from the council or public requests that a specific item be considered separately. Number one, approve the purchase of three traffic signal vehicle detection cameras from general traffic controls of Spencer, Iowa for the quoted price of fifty-six thousand, seven hundred and sixty dollars. Item two, pay request from Midland GIS Solutions LLC for the GIS data collection two thousand and nineteen for the amount of forty thousand dollars. Item three is a pay request from Snyder and Associates for the Fourth Street Southwest Reconstruction two thousand and twenty for the amount of seven thousand, nine hundred and twenty-seven dollars and fifty cents. Item four is a pay request from Feldman Concrete for the downtown alley reconstruction two thousand and twenty for the amount of fourteen thousand, seven hundred and three dollars and forty-seven cents. Item five is cash disbursements for May, two thousand and twenty. Item six is Sasquatch Jack's Hideaway Bar Room and Grill Outdoor Service Privilege for dates July third through July eighth for an event to be held July fourth, two thousand and twenty. Seek a motion to approve those.
I'll move to approve the consent calendar as read by the mayor.
Second.
Motion by Glazer, second by Bowfer.
Mr. Mayor, before you call for the vote, I just want to make sure that people who might be listening understand that the traffic signal cameras will not be issuing tickets to people. You cannot traffic that type of traffic camera. All they're going to be doing is counting traffic, things that we've been doing for years. So I don't want anybody to get concerned that we're violating someone's constitutional rights by issuing them traffic violations.
That is.
Additionally, is unrelated to the traffic study that we have paid for. This is simply the routine replacement of our traffic cameras.
Right, I think last year, James, correct me if I'm wrong, we bought one set of these.
I think we might have had up to three as well, we're trying to get three, three, and three to get these finished out.
Yeah, so do it in phases instead of all in one long timeframe. So these basically, just like the ones that we've already got at the tenth and fourth and a couple of other places already, so.
Do we anticipate a noticeable difference in operation when these are installed? You know, it seems like when we installed these last summer, it sure helped clear out the queues. Do we foresee any improvement with this installation? I'm not sure what other improvement you'd be looking at, I mean, things are flowing smooth now. A lot of it was the timing that was done and the setting, once things are sequenced, I'm not sure if the cameras are really that much of a significant issue in that matter, other than the timing itself. I think these will allow us to do more going forward from a fiber optic standpoint, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mike, he's there, but we're just trying to update our system as you go forward. And some of the things you'll see in the traffic study when that is finalized is what does our equipment look like? How much can we do from a capability standpoint? These help accentuate that.
Well, I was of the impression that some of our traffic camera or traffic signals could be used by the the traffic study engineers? And some of them were not up to date enough to be helpful. So updating these should make these easier for the traffic study people to pull data off of them.
Correct.
Yeah, I was gonna. Was there a locate, there, there wasn't a location put in for those? That I saw, or maybe there was.
The location was listed.
Yeah, yeah, it is there. So West Bremer Avenue at tenth, West Bremer at sixteenth, and fourth and Oak Ridge Technology Place down by Veridian, so.
Um, actually, okay, I'm gonna ask a question that we brought up before. So these signals, are they going to have walk, don't walk symbols added? So as I recall, at Bremer and tenth and Bremer at sixteenth, they do not have complete kind of walk symbols. Is this just for the detection or is it also updating the signaling?
This is just the detection cameras.
Just the detection cameras.
Yep. All right, any other items? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say the same. Motion carries on the consent calendar, thank you for that lead in, Rod. Item G is regular business, resolution twenty dash ninety-two. A resolution approving contract bonds and certificate of insurance from Maymark Tiling Incorporated for the Cedar River Park Phase One Grading Project and authorizing the mayor to sign the contract.
I'll move approval of a resolution twenty ninety-two approving contract bonds and certificate of insurance from Maymark Tiling Inc. of Lime Springs, Iowa for the Cedar River Park Phase One Grading Project and authorizing the mayor to sign the contract.
Second.
Motion by Schneider, second by Bowfer. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call Carla.
Oh, four.
Yes.
Bergen.
Yes.
Drinkow. Drinkow.
Yeah, I said yes.
Sorry, Glazer.
Yes.
Kangas.
Yes.
Rothie.
Yes.
Schneider.
Yes.
On a vote of seven, zero, resolution twenty dash ninety-two is approved. Resolution, or number two is resolution twenty dash ninety-three, a resolution approving change order number four, accepting the airport obstruction removal project two thousand and twenty as complete and approving pay application number four as the final pay request.
I'll move to approve resolution twenty dash ninety-three approving change order number four in the amount of twelve thousand, sixty-seven dollars and fifty cent decrease, accepting the airport obstruction removal project two thousand and twenty as complete and approving pay application number four in the amount of six thousand, one hundred and eleven dollars and fifty-four cents as the final pay request to Schrader Excavating and Grading Company of Walford, Iowa.
Second.
Motion by Glazer, second by Kangas. Any discussion? Hearing and seeing none, roll call Carla.
Bergen.
Yes.
Drinkow.
Yes.
Glazer.
Yes.
Kangas.
Yep.
Rothie.
Yes.
Schneider.
Yes.
Oh, four.
Yes.
On a seven, zero, zero absent, resolution twenty dash ninety-three is approved. Item number three is resolution twenty dash ninety-four, resolution approving application to the Iowa Department of Transportation for state recreational trails funding and directing execution of said application by the Waverly City Council.
I will move approval of resolution twenty dash ninety-four approving application to the Iowa Department of Transportation for state recreation trails funding and directing execution of said application by the Waverly City Council.
Second.
Motion by Bergen, second by Rothie. Any discussion here?
I guess I'm just wondering what, I think we talked about this before, but what are the likely, what's the likelihood that we'll have this SRT grant approved? I, it looks like it's at least a fairly good chance that this will be approved.
I think it's fifty fifty, you know, I don't know, Rod, it's, we tried once before, the state did not grant those funds. And so we thought we'd take one more run at it while we still had time. I think we're a good candidate for it just because of what it does. You know, the direct trail system has got a lot of popularity across the state. It's been one of those things to promote healthy awareness around the state, it's a huge system that is finally connects. I think we're a good candidate, but then again, I don't get to make the decision. But worst case, we're funded, we have the other funding source, the other grant. We really want to use that state funding if we can, so we thought it was worth another try to simply put the application through and see if we could get it, and then it lessens the amount we have to use of local tax dollars.
You know, when we'll find out whether we've gotten the grant approved or not?
Um, I would say end of the summer, we should know. We're hoping to have this designed and then let in the spring, early spring, February, we do the letting. So I would think maybe fall at the latest, I would hope we'd have an idea.
Otherwise, James, looking back at budget session, didn't we have this project a hundred percent in the budget, not that it would necessarily go forward, but.
We already have tap funding for this for the bulk of it, and then we have a hundred and ten of our funds needed, if that's the route we have to go. If we get the state funding, we would only need seventy-five thousand of our funding, the rest would be state, so.
Right.
Not a huge swing, but it's enough, we thought we'd try it again, try and use that state funding, free up that local money through intercoag to another source of project instead of ours, but worst case, we are funded.
Absolutely. Any other discussion there? All right, hearing no more, roll call Carla, please.
Drinkow.
Yes.
Glazer.
Yes.
Kangas.
Yes.
Rothie.
Yes.
Schneider.
Yes.
Oh, four.
Yes.
Bergen.
Yes.
On a vote of seven, zero with zero absent, resolution twenty dash ninety-four is approved. Item number four is resolution twenty dash ninety-five. A resolution appointing UMB Bank of West Des Moines, Iowa to serve as paying agent, bond registrar, and transfer agent approving the paying agent and bond registrar and transfer agent agreement and authorizing the execution of the agreement.
I'll move approval of resolution twenty dash ninety-five as read by the mayor.
Second.
Motion by Drinkow, second by Bergen, council discussion?
Basically, these are the people that are gonna process our loans, we have two different grant bonds to them. So to jump in, number four and six are the same resolution, just for each series. UMB will just process them, help us make payments, make sure we're staying ahead of it and register them with the feds as need be.
Such a financial advisor processor.
Yep.
All right, roll call Carla.
Glazer.
Yes.
Kangas.
Yes.
Rothie.
Yes.
Schneider.
Yes.
Oh, four.
Yes.
Bergen.
Yes.
Drinkow.
Yes.
Vote of seven, zero, zero absent, resolution twenty dash ninety-five is approved. Item five, resolution twenty dash ninety-six, a resolution authorizing and providing for the issuance of five million, two hundred and seventy thousand of general obligation bonds, series two thousand and twenty A, and amending the levy of taxes to pay said bonds, approval of the tax exemption certificate and continuing disclosure certificate.
I will move approval of resolution twenty dash ninety-six as read by the mayor.
Second.
Motion by Bergen, second by Kangas. Any further discussion here?
I'll just add, sir, that five and seven then on the agenda tonight allows you to actually levy a tax to pay for the bonds. Now that you've sold them, this legally says now you can tax, as we had done the pre-levy hearing back before the budget occurred, this is why. Now you can make a payment in the next fiscal year, otherwise you'd have to wait another full year. So this formally officially does that with the amounts known now that the bonds are actually sold.
Thank you, sir. Hearing no further discussion, Carla, roll call, please.
Kangas.
Yes.
Rothie.
Yes.
Schneider.
Yes.
Oh, four.
Yes.
Bergen.
Yes.
Drinkow.
Yes.
Glazer.
Yes.
On a vote of seven, zero, zero absent, resolution twenty dash ninety-six is approved. Resolution twenty dash ninety-seven, a resolution appointing UMB Bank at A of West Des Moines, Iowa to serve as paying agent, bond registrar, and transfer agent approving the paying agent and bond registrar and transfer agent agreement and authorizing the execution of the agreement. Seek a motion, please.
I'll move approval of resolution twenty dash ninety-seven as read by the mayor.
Second.
Motion by Rothie, second by Bergen. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call Carla.
Rothie.
Yes.
Schneider.
Yes.
Oh, four.
It can probably.
Yes. Bergen.
Yes.
Drinkow.
Yes.
Glazer.
Yes.
Kangas.
Yes.
On a vote of seven to zero, zero absent, resolution twenty dash ninety-seven is approved. Item number seven, resolution twenty dash ninety-eight, resolution authorizing and providing for the issuance of seven hundred thousand. Thank you, this is just an echo. Issuance of seven hundred thousand dollar taxable general obligation bonds, series two thousand and twenty B, and amending the levy of taxes to pay said bonds, approval of the continuing disclosure certificate.
I'll move approval of resolution twenty dash ninety-eight as read by the mayor.
Second.
Motion by Rothie, second by Kangas, any discussion? Hearing none, roll call Carla.
Schneider.
Yes.
Oh, four.
Yes.
Bergen.
Yes.
Drinkow.
Yes.
Glazer.
Yes.
Kangas.
Yes.
Rothie.
Yes.
On a vote of seven, zero with zero absent, resolution twenty dash ninety-eight is approved. Item H is reports from boards and commissions. Item number one is the Ball Diamond Task Force minutes of March twenty, March second of two thousand and twenty. Item two is the Bremer Waverly Law Board minutes of April thirteenth, two thousand and twenty, and the monthly financials for May of two thousand and twenty, all received into record. Staff updates, Mr. Browner.
I think Garrett has a brief update, other than that, I don't think there are any others.
Yep, thanks, James.
Yes, sir.
Couple of things that I have with the approval this evening of Maymark Construction or Maymark Tiling. We are planning on having a groundbreaking ceremony for the Ball Diamonds. This Friday at nine AM, can make it out, that would be great. Other than that, our other topic is the pool. And jury's still out on that as to what we're gonna do exactly for the summer. Right now, as you all know, social distancing is still a thing. While that is in play, I do not think that it's very practical to open the pool during social distancing. So I am waiting on the governor's announcement that's coming for June twenty-five. We will see what she has to say at that point and make a decision from there.
All right, thank you, Garrett.
I don't think we have any others, sir.
Okay, sounds good. Moving into city council comments, I'm just gonna start at the top left, and that would be Mr. Drinkow, word three.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think all of you know yesterday was Flag Day, and I hope that as many people as possible honor the day by displaying our national flag. In the third ward, over the last several months, we've had a pretty good number of residents who've taken to flying our national flag every single day. And I think that the reason for that is to show solidarity and patriotism during this coronavirus epidemic. As a nation, we have to remain strong and focused on beating this virus with the least loss of life possible. And if we stay united, I've got no doubt that we'll come out on the other side of this even stronger. However, the last couple of weeks displaying the flags taken on another even greater meaning. It symbolizes the promise of this country that all people are equal in the eyes of God and in our society. No one, particularly in Waverly, should be afraid that they or their children will be targeted because of the color of their skin. We clearly have a long way to go, both in our town and in our country. But it gives me hope that in this country, even though our transgressions may be swept under the rug for years or even decades or even centuries, that we as Americans always try to move forward to make things better. So I would encourage all Waverly citizens, if you're able to display the American flag as a symbol of the right of all Americans to live in peace and dignity. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I appreciate that, Rod, thank you. I'm one of those firm believers that being a patriot is not just a one-day occurrence or just a few-day occurrence. I try to have mine out there as much as possible. So, all right, next person up is Mr. Kangas in word five.
I just had a question on, from a constituent on the bottle and can recycling. Is there going to be someplace open in Waverly after the recycling center closes down or the Redemption Center, I guess, closes?
That, I don't know, James, any?
I've not heard of anything, sir, that's kind of a private industry we've not dabbled in, just because of the money it turns over resulting in it. So I've certainly not heard of anything else coming up, I know it's a topic that's gaining some ground swell on it, but this is not something we as a city have been involved in the past. Again, it's kind of come and gone, there's been people that take it up, but I don't know of anything else that's coming around to pick up that slack. Thank you, that's all I had.
Perfect. Next up is Mr. Glazer in word two.
I did not have anything this evening.
Glad to see you out practicing your golf swing this weekend, sir, in the front yard. All right, Mr. Bergen in word one.
So I was out this Sunday at the demonstration of support for the Black Lives Matter movement. I think there was a very good turnout, I think there was good support. I think it's important to raise awareness for the systemic racism that still exists in our society. And I think it's important to listen to a lot of the stories that are coming out of individual experiences. A lot of people like me have never experienced those sorts of firsthand stories, so it is very important for us to listen and to learn about the systemic problems that still exist in our society. I like to think that the Waverly Police Department works well, but I also know that we have a lot of people in our community whose first experience with police officers and primary experience with police officers is not with the Waverly Police Department. Or we have people who have experienced a lot of negative, very dangerous and anxious-causing experiences with police officers in other communities. And I think that it is important for our police officers to keep that in mind when dealing with people who are not necessarily from Waverly, who've had a wide variety of experience with police officers. To realize that, you know, as welcoming as our police department tries to be, and as much as we focus on community policing, that we have a lot of people who are coming from outside of our community who are very anxious when they interact with the police officer. So I am thankful for the Waverly Police Department to continue to do a good job, but as with anywhere, there's always improvement that can be made. So I was very thankful that we have support in this community turning out for the Black Lives Matter to amplify those. So, um, I was very thankful that we have support in this community, turning out for the Black Lives Ma- Matter to, uh, amplify those voices and to make it clear that their voices are welcome in our community.
Thank you, Mr. Bergen. Move on to Ms. Rothy at large.
Um, I want to second what Garrett said about the groundbreaking ceremony this Friday morning. Um, hopefully we'll see some softball and baseball players out there, um, to celebrate that. It's been a long time coming, but it'll be good to see dirt moving. Um, I also want to second what, uh, Brian said about yesterday's gathering at the courthouse. It was a, a nice gathering of people. We got a lot of honking cars, uh, in support who drove by. Um, and that was really nice to see. I think that, uh, you know, those of us not in the minority need to listen to people of color about their experience and uh, we like to think of ourselves as a friendly, welcoming community, but I think there are probably people in the community that have not perceived us to be that and we need to work on that. I did have a constituent reach out today who, um, whose family members have experienced racism in town. Uh, he was suggesting that perhaps a good place to start with education would be with city staff. And I think education, um, about something like this is better done by hearing stories of people who've had personal experience rather than just looking at a PowerPoint about statistics. So I think some brainstorming on the part of us as a council, maybe with help from our Embrace uh, volunteers that helped us organize that would be, would be good. But I also want to call attention that I think St. Paul's is sponsoring a vigil at Coleman Park Wednesday evening at 6 o'clock. Coach Newsome from the college is going to speak and, uh, people, uh, I hope people will turn out and, um, to listen and to, uh, show support for this very important cause.
Thank you. Uh, move over to Mr. Schneider in at large.
Nothing this evening, Mr. Mayor.
All right, and wrap it up with, for council members would be Ms. Bowfer in Ward four.
Um, I really don't have much to say, um, other than I know that, uh, the police department is conducting their annual bike auction, June 23rd at 5:00 PM. Um, uh, and I guess the rain date for the event is the 24th and the 25th. So, um, annual bike auction, um, there's some things, items for sale. They're also selling, um, uh, the 2010 Ford Crown Vic, uh, previously the K9 Squad car. So, um, it has 106,000 miles on it, so, um, join the auction. That's it.
Good deal. All right, guest councilwoman, Ms. Burrell.
Yes, thank you, and I apologize in advance if you hear a child in the background, so no sitter tonight, um. Um, yeah, I just want to again say thank you, um, for everyone to allow me to be here again and, um, for those council members that were able to, to be there in attendance on Sunday. Um, you know, just speaking from, um, my own experiences in the last three weeks, I've really been, um, quite overwhelmed, quite stressed, quite depressed, quite anxiety, um, and emotional in, in many ways, but also, um, very hopeful, inspired and, um, appreciative as well. So, um, I could go on and on. I just want to say, uh, I just ask that you continue to speak up and speak in support of those who are the minority. Um, i- it's real, i- i- it's, it's great to hear honks and waves and whatnot, but you know, there are people flicking us off and there are people putting old, you know, thumbs down and you're, I mean, for me standing there, it's like, they're basically saying I don't matter. My life doesn't matter, my son doesn't matter, we don't hold the same value. Um, and that's hard to take. And that's hard to read on social media, that's hard to, um, listen to, it's hard to have comments, um. Uh, so please know that that's real. It, it doesn't matter that I fit the mold. Um, I've said it to people all over. I have many privileges. I can acknowledge those privileges, I can accept those privileges. I have both my parents, I had a strong education, private education here in Wortburg, um, grad master's degree, I have a lighter skin, which is a privilege. Um, and yet still I have to live in the world like that with, um, discrimination. Help, there goes the choice, okay. Come here, please, come here. And so I just, please know that, you know, that doesn't, you know, fitting the mold, doing the right things, you know, I can, I've strove to be perfect my whole life. I've tried to be the best role model and person I can be and yet still the color of my skin, um, is diminished in many people's eyes. And so, um, I just want you guys to know that, um, your support matters, your, um, awareness, I, I understand. I'm learning how much people don't know about our history, um, and, and even myself, I'm still learning. I have to unlearn prejudices myself. I grew up in Iowa, um, I'm biracial. I mean, I have my own learning and growing to do as well, and I just, um, ask that you are open. Um, open your heart, open your mind, um, just because of what you know, you don't know what you don't know. And I'm telling you, there's a lot out there that you don't know. Um, and, and it's becoming more apparent every day as I talk with people. Um, and that's frustrating, that's overwhelming, that's hard to hear that people don't even know what's really going on. Um, but at the same time, by having those conversations, so many people have poured outreach and have been there and, and are willing to listen and, and accept and, and, and can own up to their like naivety in this. Um, and that's no fault to them necessarily, um, but now that we know, we need to do better. When you know better, you do better. Um, and I just ask that of all of you, that you just continue, continue to show support and be the example, be the leaders and be bold and courageous in that because, um, it's liberating. It's liberating and it's, it's a feeling, I think, that people need, um, and, and that we can rally around and support. So again, I just thank you, I echo that with Ann Rothy, the, the vigil on Wednesday, please come in attendance. Um, if you can make it this Sunday, I believe they're doing that again. Um, and just even experience it, you stand there, sit there, be off to the side, just experience the positiveness, experience the, um, love and support, but also feel that pain when it happens and, and, and know that, what that feels like, because that's a daily occurrence for many people. Thank you for your time.
Absolutely. Thank you for summarizing that and pointing out all those things that, uh, we often don't hear and sometimes need to. Um, my own comments tonight, I only have one. Uh, and that's regarding the groundbreaking ceremony that we're gonna have hopefully on Friday with the rain date, I think it's the 22nd, uh, we're still working out some of those details because it was pending. Couple of things are, one item on the agenda tonight. Um, I just wanted to point out the fact that it was very important to me to continue to recognize the work that was done with the Ball Diamonds going back when it was, you know, started with Champions Ridge and migrated to, um, what our plan is now. Uh, the leadership that we had prior to this, I felt that it was important to, um, go ahead and invite, um, you know, previous leadership, including, uh, former mayor Celeste to the groundbreaking, he will be participating, uh, in that. Um, it's a course of follow through. I know that, uh, during campaign and stuff, there were some accusations out there that, um, this, this whole project would, you know, be cut off and, and come to an end. And I think that's one additional way to show that we can, you know, continue to to pull ourselves together as we make transitions and changes in, in our government. And so I felt it was important to, to have him there. Um, with that, I had mentioned that to James a couple of weeks ago, uh, that it was important. Um, because I know that it was important to him and I, I think that is still part of, um, his legacy and the council before his legacy. So I just want to honor that, that it takes, um, a, a lot of people to be involved in these things and give credit where credit's due, so. Um, without further ado, I'll seek a motion to adjourn.
Move that we adjourn.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Kangas and Mr. Schneider, all in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose, the same sign, we are adjourned. Thank you very much. See you on the 22nd.
Thank you.